Partnership with our community, prepare our students for achievement and lifetime readiness by providing opportunities for all. And on that note, we will call to order the Board of Education meeting for Monday, October 28th. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Rich, are you aware of anything we need to adjust on the agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Rick's motion is seconded by Jennifer to approve our agenda the way it is. Does anyone have questions or comments or concerns? If not, please signify approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Minutes are in board docs per usual.
I'll move to approve the minutes for the regular meeting held on October 14th, 2024 as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Jennifer's motion is seconded by Tracy to approve the minutes of our previous board meeting. Does anyone have questions on those? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those are approved. Following minutes, of course, are vouchers.
I'll move to approve general checking account vouchers, totaling $869,4542 as presented.
Second. John's motion is seconded by Rick to approve our checking account vouchers in the amount that John just enumerated. Are there any questions on the vouchers? And all in favor of approval, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right. F was a much anticipated and eagerly looked forward to piece of our meeting. It's our student council report. Once a month, we are thrilled to have the kids from the high school come and share with us. Colleen, I think, is making her way to the podium, so welcome. Please let us know what fun things have been going on.
I'm pretty old, so if you don't know me, I'm an assistant. I'm a senior opening school. So this is my first time as a council and I'm very excited to be here. Our richer gear drive is being sponsored by the MHS Walking Club, which is a group of current and retired teachers at high school. The district membership event is at October 3rd at the Montfort Library. So, it's super awesome. We're doing a pink thing for rest kids' awareness. They actually work there. Students are... Sorry.
Encouraged?
Yes, encouraged, thank you. So we're pink for that is for rest kids' awareness and we are also bringing out veterans that have gone to Waldo County. Our history club trip is also just recently returned from Boston. That was super exciting and I was on that one. It was a very exciting way to be like in the place of history we were at the, um, when she would, Boston massacre happened, which was super awesome. And then our trick or treating family that happened yesterday, it was 500-plus kids in attendance, which is always super awesome to see. I was there and I was really excited to be there. And then, yeah, our volleyball team made playoffs, which is super exciting. And then our marching band took home a great place in their class again.
Excellent. Sounds like you've been busy.
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Well, welcome. We hope to see you again. All right. We have no one signed up for public comment. We will roll past that. That puts us into Rich, superintendent update, and the Red Hawk highlights. Looks like our administrators are on tap for this month or this meeting.
Come up to the podium and share highlights, things that are happening at their level or at their school. Looks like Martin's ready to get things up.
All right. At our 4K through third grade buildings, we have been very active this fall already. Teachers have been completing their ACT 20 reading training to strengthen our literacy efforts. We've also had some meaningful parent-teacher conferences, allowing parents and teachers to connect and discuss their students' progress. And additionally, students have enjoyed and will be enjoying continuing this week, everything fall related. We've had so many apples and donuts and pumpkins and deliciousness going throughout the schools. It makes, that part smells really yummy. And we're also in the midst of preparing special ways to honor our veterans for veterans' day.
Awesome. One of those same things happening at Northside, parent-teacher conferences, show up to the parents group for making a book fair, always a popular place to stop if students have a good conference. We also had the penny war. Part of our mission with the Friends of Northside is raising funds to replace our 1993 playground at Northside Intermediate School. We have next week elections within Northside for our student council, so that's exciting for our sixth grade students, as well as they talked Mrs. Kramer into giving the chess club going. So, exciting times. So, yeah.
I inherited the Northside Chess Club. I'm a little bit of a chess so. All right. So, at the middle school, we recently had an assembly that was, still, it was a town war competition and our second graders were living for that. So that was an exciting celebration assembly. Our community team is currently selling suckers to donate money to the Can Do organization. We had our dance last Friday night and we had more students in attendance at that dance than the last year of dances and rec nights and individual events. So that was promising that many students were in attendance for that. During conferences, Officer Schneider and Maggie from the Youth Coalition partnered to offer both hidden play site and also some drug trend awareness. So those are both opportunities for families to learn more about what's out there connected to teenagers. And then for teaching and learning, we updated our PLC format throughout the week and it's just been a really healthy change in ways to celebrate the things that are happening with our student learning in our classrooms and to be able to be vulnerable with one another, but then also celebrate the things that are really going well and contribute to student learning.
At the high school, I'm going to repeat, just a couple of things that Colleen mentioned, but yes, history and culture, big thanks to Mr. Paddock and his staff, which are another great trip to Boston. That is always a highlight every year and we're thankful for the work that they do. But we also have the FA national commissioners, I got back from Indianapolis, Stacy Sten, who gave try, the advisors there did a great job on that trip. The MHS activities, 225 cluster groups, if you've never been to that before, it is, you know, there's 500 students, 500 kids that go up there. I think each one brings about nine adults with them to trick or treats. And so the amount of candy that is handed out that day is actually quite a handful. But to see the students and advisors get into it, it is really encouraging to see people walk through the building. It was a huge event. So kudos just to the air who helped organize all of that with Lance Kinnon. Again, marching band, they're playing the state competition. They had their highest score, actually the last three years of state competition. And Colleen, they're about this close to taking get your word in the color guard, which Colleen is one of the leaders of that group. So, we're very, very proud of them, Mr. Check and all the work that they put in this year. Congratulations to Nathan George for the cross-country team making it to state. Our first goal of making the state cross-country in some time, actually, but us are very proud of them. I've been working with a lot of staff on new course proposals, you'll be seeing those soon. Likewise, we have been planning for the November PD date, staff will be, high school staff will have sessions actually on looking at some of the features of the Apple iPad too, as we continue to discuss what our future might be with one-to-one, but also session length one book as well with hints on some of the features involved in the idea from the, the Apple side and Chromebook. That's part of what the date is going to be on November 4th. Four weeks into talk, talk two, our social studies, science, math, and English departments are working with students, each students one day a week. We have, actually, the students are in ACT's learning support, so that is what pleases how that is progressing. And then obviously this Friday, we are hosting Level 2 playoffs for the first time since 2005. It's been a long time since we posted that playoff game this season to the playoffs. We're really excited. Actually, I was coaching the last time. That has been a long time. So, really, Coach Paul's entire staff did a great job. And then also, the girls volleyball team is going to be at Oregon High School on Thursday night. Coach Kinnon, yeah, we're very excited, the regional champs, and they're going to be in sessionals again at Oregon at 5:00 on Thursday. And I'm sure I missed a few things, but there's just a good thing happening.
Very good. Questions from anyone? All right. Anything else for your bench?
No.
All right. Okay. We have a light agenda tonight and we've only had one committee meeting that we need to report back on, and that was finance that's had a little bit of a go. And John's going to share with us highlights of that.
Thanks, Joe. On Thursday, October 23rd, fourth, the finance committee held a meeting. There were two items we discussed. You will see them both on tonight's agenda. The two are related, so I will summarize both briefly before Ross and Rich go through the presentation. On October 15th, 2024, the district received the final pieces of information necessary to adopt our budget and set the tax levy for the 24-25 school year. The updated information from our third Friday pupil count and our aid certification for the 24-25 school year have been used to update our revenue limit calculation. As we just, as we finalize the 24-25 budget, we always keep in mind the important balance of providing high-quality education and programs for students while being fiscally responsible. Since the annual meeting, we have updated our staffing calculations, incorporated our third Friday accounts, the Department of Revenue Property estimates, and the October 15 aid certification. This has resulted in a change to our initial tax levy estimate. I will now pass it over to Ross and Rich to go through the presentation, and this is an action item.
Go ahead, Ross.
Yeah. First of all, hi, folks. It's been a few minutes since I've seen some of you in a while. It's been a busy season, but believe it or not, we are now at the end of another budget cycle and we're about to mark not only the final step of this cycle, but start all over again. So as we look forward to this, I want to update the board and the community on what the budget cycle looks like, especially around this time of year. Largest piece I want to cover tonight is, the first word I want to cover, I'm sorry, is that when we plan the school budget, we actually start our deck at this point for the next year. And once we approve the school year budget tonight, we are going to start right away in November and December, looking at our projections for next year, the information known to us and those we're going to be able to anticipate. This upcoming budget cycle will be the start of when we get another state biennial budget. And the estimates we put together now are going to be based on what we know and it matters every year whether or not we're in the middle of a state budget, like we were finishing up the current cycle now or going into a new state budget cycle over the next two years. In late winter or right after the holidays, Rich, Chris, and I, the rest of the administrative team, will start looking at our staffing needs for the coming year. And by the time we get to June, we're talking again about the preliminary budget for the next school year and preparing for the annual meeting, which usually occurs at the end of August. The final pieces of information, as John alluded to a minute ago, is that we wait for our third Friday accounts, October 15 certification, our general aid, our Department of Revenue property values, and our state levy in October. Some key budgetary impacts to keep in mind this time of year is the difference between two key numbers that get thrown around a lot, enrollment and membership. These are two very different numbers that we use to gauge the capacity in our buildings and how we feed numbers into our revenue limit itself. Enrollment very simply refers to headcount or the number of students in our buildings on third Friday of each school year. A membership number is an adjusted headcount number that accounts for residents, school district members, student members, as well as an adjustment factor for any non-full-time staff. For example, our 4K students are not counted as a total student, they're counted every pocket. The revenue limit is then used to determine what our revenue resources are for a given year. And as you've heard me say many, many times, the revenue limit is a state imposed limit on funding between the difference of state need and local property taxes. The revenue limit is created using a three-year average of student membership. And this is multiplied by a local per people amount that determines our annual revenue limit each year. That local multiplier is a state-derived number based on local state factors, but all went back to early 90s. At a very high level, the revenue limit looks a bit like this. For the current year, we're operating with a three-year membership average of 3361, which is a membership three-year average decrease of 27. This is in inverse relationship to the number of headcount we had on the third Friday, which is 10 higher than it was last year. Going into this state budget, we know that we have a $325 per people increase in our revenue limits. And we know that the Department of, I'm sorry, the Department of Public Instruction is expected to release their budget requests to the governor sometime in early November. We don't know exactly when that's going to happen, but we're watching very closely so we can be in our planning for the 25-27 cycle. As a reminder, prior to this year, six of the last 10 state budgets provided no increase in per people adjustment beyond the revenue limit. And this current state budget has not only the highest per people adjustment, but it was one of the many, one of the largest increases since the low revenue ceiling since the beginning of revenue limits themselves. Here's a quick depiction of what our three-year average is looking like on a membership basis. While we do maintain that we have our understanding enrollment at this point, our membership number is still working under a three-year average, declining due in part to changes in the last couple of several years due to COVID and other local factors. Looking a bit further on the revenue calculation, I want to highlight a few things on this page. One, the section marked non-recurring or one-time exemptions indicate a number of, surprise, one-time exemptions we receive each year in each revenue limit. The top of the box there indicates the $2.5 million. This is our current non-recurring referendum set to expire after the 25-26 school year. Our declining enrollment exemption is also listed on this page. This is a number that is derived after the three-year rolling average is inserted into the revenue calculation. If that number is less than the prior year, a multiplier is created based on that reduction amount. The thing I do want to highlight here is last year, our enrollment exemption was $473,000. This year it's 306. This indicates that not only is our revenue, I'm sorry, our enrollment flattening, but our average is starting to normalize as well. At the bottom of this area is a section around private school voucher payments. This is a tax pass for our district, indicating that we're required to tax for, which is paid out to private schools throughout the state. And over the course of two years, this private school voucher exemption for students in the school district of Milton has doubled. I also want to highlight something we discussed kind of at length last year, that is the school levy credit program. In the state's commitment to two-thirds funding in education, it includes what they put in the general aid pocket each year for school districts across the state and something called the school levy tax credit program. School levy tax credits are paid to municipalities each year and are shown with individual tax bills based on your share of the total in that area. For many, many years, this program has seen infrequent and very minimal growth in state appropriations, but during the 23-25 state budget, more funding was put into school levy tax credits and the general aid program in total. And the reason this matters is when we talk about school funding, one of the largest components in this school levy program does not even flow through the school district, it goes straight to the municipalities that we serve. For this coming year, residents should be looking at their city of Milton or appropriate municipality tax bill and looking for this box in the lower left of the tax bill to give them. School taxes have been reduced by school levy tax credit by even more listed. This is an example, this is not going to be the same for everyone in our area, but if you received an exemption last year on your tax bill, which you should have, you should expect that to increase another 5% to 7% in the coming year based on your assessment. The state appropriation increased 27% last year and increased another 7% for calendar year 2025 tax bills. Moving on then to our general fund budget. The general fund budget in total will be up about 0.89% over last year's final numbers. This quick depiction shows our major revenue sources as well as our large, larger expenditure areas by function. Couple of things I want to highlight on here, the local sources or source 200, right in the middle of this area, you'll see that the local sources from the tax levy increased last year after our change to the revenue ceiling. But for this coming year, we have an expected decrease in our local tax levy by about 4% from the last year. Also to note, when looking at larger swings in this area, under federal sources, you might notice that two years ago, we had 2.2, almost 2.3 million thousand federal sources, and this year we only anticipated about 330,000. This is due in large part to the exploration of one-time sources, such as Essar, that we've been spending as that money expired September of this year. Since our annual meeting, I want to highlight a couple of things that have been adjusted for our approval consideration tonight. Every July 1st, school districts across the state receive what's called a state aid estimate. This is based on budgetary data that all school districts are required to submit to the Department of Public Instruction. And our assessment originally had us increasing about 5%. This ends up being fairly true for once in the July 1 estimate, but not because it changed. At the annual meeting, we use the state guarantees provided to us from that July 1 estimate based on actual spending for Milton, and we decreased slightly. I'm happy to report that we actually bounced back. It's kind of October 15 certification, we have increased about $50,000 over where we were at the annual meeting. We also received a one-time payment in property aid funding directly from the Department of Revenue. This is coming from the 2023 Act 12 appropriation. This was a bit of a mystery when it was first released to school districts in late August. Many were confused that we received an additional letter, which is usually as part of the revenue limit. As it turns out, this funding is not part of the revenue limit and it's actually over and above. Since we did not have this planned in our realistic figures, the part of the reason we're at our tax position, we're considering tonight, is we are deducting this one-time source of revenue from the current year tax levy, so that we're not levying as much as we could. We also have a decrease in anticipated private school voucher exemptions. In the memo I identified, this is about $40,000 down from the annual meeting. This does not provide any additional resources for us, it just means that the money in and out both decreased by $40,000 since the annual meeting. As we saw in the earlier slide, we had an improvement in our decline in enrollment exemption, and this has been a result in preserving more of our base revenue for future years in the revenue limit. The subcomponents in a total decrease in our levy, about 12%, which is more of a decrease than we had at the annual meeting. At the annual meeting, we're about 2.5% down over last year, we are now at 4% down over last year. On the expenditure side, a few things have changed. One, we had a decrease in our Fund 73 expenditures. This is our OPEV, or Other Post-Employment Benefits Contributions each year. Our implicit rate subsidy updated for the current year after August, and we updated that in our fall calculations, and those costs are kind of getting about $50,000 less than we were. We also have a lower benefits expense for existing staff due to a lower anticipated benefit from a new hires. And as I mentioned before, a total general fund expenditure increase then is tied down to 0.89% over 23-24 year end. On our tax levy, just to show what numbers we have in each fund, our tax levy for the general fund is going from $16.8 million down to $15.9. Our revenue debt service is averaging the same as it was in the previous, in the previous year. And our community service fund is down steadily due in part to our, to our facility rental through our MFA program. This puts our total school tax levy at $21,758,120, a decrease of 4% over the prior year. Also want to take a minute to show what this looks like in our taxation rate. Earlier this fall, we had our mill rate identified as a projected $6.70. This has been updated to a mill rate of $6.90 due in part to an unexpected reassessment in the city of Jamesville, which resulted in a slightly higher tax rate. I do want to stress, as I also did in the memo for this evening, that this does not impact the total amount of levy we have for this evening. It simply reflects a change from our equalized value determinations from the Department of Revenue that resulted in a slightly higher tax rate than the original projected. With that, I can turn it back over to Joe, if there's any questions. We also have a more detailed version of the budget document presentation format. Joe, start tonight. There's also a memo I've been writing for this presentation.
All right, that's a lot of data, John. Right? That's a lot of numbers. But did you have any more out of the meeting that you wanted?
That's all I had.
Okay. So obviously, this is, as John indicated and Ross has kind of talked about, both of our agenda items, and they are tied very tightly together, obviously. The numbers from the budget update aid certification play into budgeting that we do for the coming year. It is an action item, but before we entertain that, does anyone have questions on anything that Ross shared or that the committee might have looked at on Monday? Or I'm sorry, last one.
I have a question. So on the slide where you talk about the property aid, how much was that?
The property?
The one-time property aid funding from Act 20?
The Act 12.
31,000.
Is that to recur or is that all?
As far as we know, it is one-time.
All right. And that's been received?
We're scheduled to receive it in April.
But it's for?
It's for the current this year.
For the current this year.
Ross, could you cover the community service fund decrease, the reasoning behind that again?
So, I, one of the, when I adjusted the tax levy for the community service fund, we didn't change the total expenditures of funding, but due to better performance in our election for facilities being, for residential user fees, it was deemed more appropriate to reduce the levy as it was seen to before. We had your energy.
Thank you.
Ross, thanks for all the info. Takeaways for me here are a decrease in the levy, decrease in the total levy, and a decrease in the mill rate, and I think those are not to be overlooked. And a lot of times when people talk about their taxes, they want to talk about their property evaluations, it's a related but separate topic. So what this tells me is that the administration and the board are being the fiscal stewards of this district's money. So I just want to give a thanks to all the admins and everyone in your office, Ross, who's been working on this, so thank you.
Ross, I have one more question. So when you look at the three-year average that we're, the membership that we're looking at, obviously we're, I think it's like your.
My monitor here.
Yeah. So 34, 31, so it's going down. Is it going to continue to go down?
No, in fact, it's starting to show signs of flattening out. We did have a couple of years right around post-COVID where we did see a slight dip in our annual headcount. That seems to have faded to a degree that at least we have a declining enrollment exemption area, which is the best indicator that can show you what's happening to our average. The fact that it's decreasing over a two-year period shows you that that is starting to flatten out. A three-year average takes, when you have an anomalous year, a three-year average takes a few years to recover and sell out of the system.
One thing that I'd add to that, and we talked earlier about this, this year's 4K class being the largest 4K class that we've ever had since we started 4K. Next year, when those students become kindergartners, they'll be counted as a full, one-time old student. And we also anticipate some of your large classes coming up, just additional housing within our district in a few different places and a lot of families with young kids living within our district.
Any other questions?
Just one other thing that I want to share, or any other board questions first? I just want to highlight the two things, the 4% decrease in the levy is providing direct, direct tax relief for our taxpayers. Further tax relief is this school tax credit that has gone up at the state level again, provides additional tax relief. And the mill rate decrease, it was on the slide, but this is the fifth year in a row that our tax rate in this school district has gone down. That decrease to $6.90 is about a 7.9% decrease, so a pretty significant decrease in our tax rate for this year.
Thank you, Rich.
Maybe to elaborate for those viewers, can you explain, I think you said it comes in under the revenue limit, that we cannot tax above that, correct?
We can't tax above or not.
So maybe you could just, because you're showing, we're showing a 4% decrease, but it's not like the viewers can say, well, why didn't we just tax where we were so we're not fluctuating and we're still getting even more funds for the district? So maybe kind of elaborate.
The reason for that is due in part to the fact that we don't, we know that we have a important question with parents and we can help. And the fact that we found, we got some one-time money from the state in that concrete aid and that the staffing plan that we submitted is still fully funded, those accommodations are identified, it didn't seem prudent to start adding things in this structure or the current year without knowing where our COVID recognition was going to be.
We had some, some good conversation about different options. And there are some places where, across all our schools, where we have large class sizes and we have some additional student support would be valuable, but we didn't feel like this was a good time to add any positions because if the referendum wasn't passed, it would just increase the amount that we're going to need to cut going into next year. So rather than adding things at this point, we decided to bring a recommendation to the finance committee and the finance committee then to the board to levy less than the allowable amount. And I think that that's another important point because we've shared with the operative recommendations coming out, the board would have the authority to levy up to $5 million, but it doesn't, it's not a required $5 million every year. The board always has the ability to levy less than that.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve and adopt the budget as presented with a total tax levy of $21,758,120, consisting of $15,958,883 in general fund, $5,448,600 with a total tax levy of $21,758,120, consisting of $15,958,883 in general fund, $5,448,600 debt service, and $350,637 in community service fund.
I'll second that. Okay, John's motion has been seconded by Rick, and you all just heard him, so I won't repeat it. It is above, up on the screen there for the folks that are joining us, both in person and virtually, so that they can see the exact language of that motion. Any of the board members have questions on it? And I don't see any. All in favor of the motion on the floor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That clearly passes. Thank you, John. And as I mentioned, that was the only committee, and thank you, Ross. I would be remiss if I didn't echo my thanks for you and the diligence that you give all those numbers to us, so that is very much appreciated. New business is a referendum update, and it will overlap somewhat with some of the discussions that we've just had. We're going to let Rich go first and highlight a few of the pieces of that, and then if the Board has any questions, we can certainly wade through that.
We have a couple of different documents that are in Board docs. As everyone knows, November 5th is Election Day, but early voting is also already open. So we just wanted to share an update to the Board and the community on communication around the referendum and some things coming up. So you can see on the document that's on the Board, we've got a large number of continued presentations to booster clubs, parent groups. Ross had mentioned that he hadn't been to the last couple of school board meetings here because he had been doing the presentations at some of our municipalities that also meet on Monday evenings. We've got some principals helping out with those, so thanks to everyone who's been helping with those. We also had a second mailer go out to all households in our school district, and then Carrie Clough continues to do a great job posting information on social media about the referendum and putting together some radio ads that are playing right now on WJBL and WWHG. Right now and the referendum. It's really important that our community are informed on the issues with the referendum and be able to make an informed vote and our understanding of the importance of getting out and voting between now and on November 5th. We also included the last Friday's edition of the Red Hawk Review, and I won't go through the information that's there, but we put together an article to get out to all parents on some referendum communication that's included in the Red Hawk Review and had included both some of the background information, the reasons that we have to go to referendum, having to do with state funding not keeping up with inflation, and the key details of the referendum, and then some frequently asked questions that we've been hearing, and some kind of hitting on some inaccurate information that we're hearing a little bit too. So in that part, we talked about enrollment trends and future projections, why a recurring referendum rather than a non-recurring referendum, what would happen if the state increases public school funding, and I do want to speak to that because that's a question that we've gotten a lot lately. If the state would increase its funding for public schools across the state, that would be the ideal solution for us and for other districts around the state because that would help to narrow that gap between districts that have a lot of revenue and districts that have less revenue. And it's tied to our conversation from the last agenda item because if the state increases its funding for public schools, that would decrease the amount of our projected deficits and would allow the Board to make a decision about whether we needed to levy that full $5 million amount each year. So we've gotten some good feedback and some good questions from folks about the referendum. The one other frequently asked question was around that 5% increase in state aid, and some people were confused, and they thought that that meant more revenue for our school district, and Ross and Carrie did a good job of putting together a video that's on our website that shows that that revenue limit really sets that upper limit. And the revenue limit is made up of a combination of state aid and local levy. So if the state aid portion of the revenue limit goes up, it doesn't give us more revenue, it just decreases the amount that has to come from the local taxpayers. So that 5% increase in state aid is another place where our local taxpayers are seeing some property tax relief this year. And then the last thing that I wanted to look, to share with you is the other document. As Ross shared, with the finalization of this year's levy and this year's mill rate at $6.90, we included a slide that shows from back in August our mill rate history and projection. So on that slide, you can see in the blue are the previous 10 years. The average tax rate over those 10 years was $8.44, but at that time, we had four straight years of decreased tax rate, and our projection was $6.70 for this coming year. And I'm going to refer back to it, but you can see from this earlier slide that the projected increase from a successful referendum would take the mill rate from a projected 643 to 685. So we've, in a lot of our information that we've shared out, we've talked about a 42-cent increase to the tax rate, which corresponds to $42 for every $100,000 in property value. And flip to the next slide, which is updated with the October information that Ross has now gotten from the state. You can still see those previous 10 years as our history. This year now is in blue because that's not a projection anymore, a $6.90 mill rate for this year. And you can see in the first year of the referendum, the projection would be that it would go from $6.67 to $7.04. So that would be a 37-cent increase, so a little bit smaller even increase in the mill rate based on the referendum of $37 for every $100,000 in property value. And that 37-cent increase in the mill rate is based on a projection that would be if the Board at that time was levying that full $5 million. So there's potential for it to even be less than that 37-cent increase when that time comes. So a week from tomorrow is Election Night. We're again encouraging people to gather accurate information, make an informed vote, and get out and vote.
Thanks for the info, Rich. I once again just want to thank, thank you and everyone who's involved in all this for the number of times you've met with people and in the different ways it's been done. I think that's been very helpful, whether it's mailings or the social media or in person. It's made it easier for me as a board member also to talk to people about it, so thanks to everyone.
Yeah, I too would like to thank the Board for everyone's input. You know, I think most of you would remember, this conversation started in about December a year ago with a forward look at what we were trying to do for some planning purposes, budget-wise, et cetera. And at that point, of course, lots and lots of unknowns, but as we've waded through the calendar, for lack of a better barometer, a few of the unknowns become knowns, and we just keep adjusting. We keep dialing into a little bit more certainty for what the numbers are going to look like. And of course, we had community information sessions, we wanted folks to come and hear what our challenge was, and based on that, you know, the Board and/or Finance Committee again met and digested what people shared with us and the numbers that we had at that point in time, and that was into the springtime, you know, and this is all driven by, you know, to land on the November ballot, the question is approved back in August. And so there's a real chronological sequence here, and it's been a lot of meetings, and it's a lot of numbers that, some of them are the same, some of them change, some of them adjust. So thank you to everybody's diligence. This is a, this is a big, big piece of what we're supposed to be doing, and everyone has really, has really put in the maximum effort, and I am really proud of what we have come up with for a potential solution, but we have been magnificently transparent with exactly where we're at and what we want to be doing. And I think we've taken every opportunity we have to share that with folks. We want folks to understand what we've got, and we want them to use all the information that they can get, that we can give them, to make a decision. And I'm very, very proud of the entire Board and the administrators too, because we can't do this without the support and information that we get from all of our administrators. So for Rich and Ross and everybody that supports Ross, thank you, thank you. It's just gratifying to have that level of professionalism and accuracy and numbers to deal with, so I'm very, very happy with that.
One last thing that I'd like to share is that our staff as a whole has done a really great job of helping get information out too. Now, even though we've had a lot of meetings for folks, most people don't come to those meetings. A lot of the information about the referendum is based on people talking to their neighbors and talking to their friends and family, and I think our staff members across the district have done a great job of helping to get that accurate information out. And then I also want to put in a great, real thanks for Carrie Clough. She's done an outstanding job ever since the Board approved this back in August of providing those different moments of information for folks. And just one thing that I want to share is that we got some feedback on our mailer that went out to the community that someone was upset that we had spent, obviously had spent a lot of money on some high-priced firm to put together this fancy mailer. Well, that was Carrie Clough's work, so not a lot of money, not on a high-priced firm, just something that we did in-house because we have somebody who's really good at that type of thing. So thanks to Carrie.
Kudos. Okay, that's our referendum update. If anyone doesn't have any other questions, we will move on. All right, and that takes care of the routine business. We are up to miscellaneous, and A is the staffing report.
I move to approve the staffing report presented.
Second. Rick's motion is seconded by John to approve our staffing report. Does anyone have questions? I see none. All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That clearly passes. Gifts and donations, and that summary is also in Board docs.
I'll move to approve the gifts and donations with gratitude.
Second. That is Tracy's motion, seconded by John, and I will just point out that this is a rather, the list is somewhat longer than other years or other meetings, I'm sorry, and it does total $63,000 of generosity from our community residents, so.
I do have a question. So can, would you explain at Consolidated what's being done with playground?
So we had some wooden playground structure that were starting to splinter and kind of just decay. So those were removed this summer, several benches and a wooden slide feature. And so we've been raising money through donations through the summer and other fundraisers with parent group, and we were able to purchase new benches that are going to be the metal benches that'll last forever, and then there is going to be a, like a spinner type of a feature that's put in, and we have a family at Consolidated that owns a business that asked what it would take to finish that project and then provided that generous donation from their business to help us accomplish that rest of the project. So you're grateful.
That's wonderful. Thank you for that, appreciate it. And then the scoreboard from the football, Mr.?
No more.
Says Milton Football, $23,436 for scoreboard.
I am not familiar with the technical terms. I'm a official.
I figured, Mr. Schulberg, is it a new one or is it replacing what's there?
It's replacing.
So they're going to take down the one that's there and put up a new one?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a good question because we have replaced the scoreboard at the Barsky Football Field and at Carlisle Anderson, and that was all done through sponsorships. And this is the new football, replacing one, and you're replacing Mr. Schulberg for the youth thing and lower level at Barsky, your junior Barsky fields.
Well, thank you to all of the donations, they're very generous.
So that was just for one of the scoreboards?
I think so, is that Greg Ross?
I believe so.
It's on the far right field. The other ones don't have scoreboards.
Okay, we, I'm sorry, do we have a motion on the floor? I don't even remember. I think we thank you, Tracy and John's motion to approve the donations. If there aren't any other questions, all in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? The donations are gratefully accepted. And meeting dates, Mr. Don.
We do not have any committee meetings coming up between now and the next board meeting, so we have the two regularly scheduled board meetings in November, on November 11th and November 25th.
Well, that's not much to debate on meetings. All right, so we have come to the end of the routine agenda, and we have scheduled an executive session tonight, so I will read for you the verbiage that I need to, to move us into that. I would entertain a motion pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 1985 Sub 1 and Sub D, which is consider specific applications of probation, extended supervision or parole, or considering strategy for crime detection or prevention. If this subject matter is critical incident drill review from 2425 school year. Second. Thank you. Rick's motion seconded by John. It's an executive motion, so I need to roll call it. So John, yes?
Tracy.
Rick, yes. Joe is yes, and Jennifer?
Yes.
Five oh. We are in executive session. Thank you all. We are not returning to open.